All right, good evening. It is six past six on March 2, 2023. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I note for the record this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody is recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Not seen any. I've not seen any. I'd note for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Members Joe Fisher and Liz Klein. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance for those willing and able. Please stand and place the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Yes. Sure, yep. Sure, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Welcome.
Great.
And you have adopted by reference. Great, great. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have three minutes for consideration this evening. Liz, are you ready to vote this evening?
Yes.
On all three. Joe?
Yes.
All right, with that, I take a motion.
I'll move to the approve the minutes dated February 16, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. I take a second motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 21, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. I take a third motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated February 28, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of the Hingham Sports Partnership Incorporated for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Night 2023 to be held at the Loring Hall on April 2, 2023 from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. We have Ray Estes with us. Ray, come up to the podium. Just name an address for the record, if you don't mind, and tell us about the event.
Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street for the Hingham Sports Partnership. So, last year, we brought back Comedy Night after a seven-year hiatus. It was very successful, and I think the community was thrilled that we were able to bring it back. We're reprising that again this year. We're very excited to have three headliner comedians lined up. It's going to be the usual event, starting at the Loring Theater and then followed by dinner at Tosca. And we did request a malt beverage, wine beverage, liquor license, as we usually do at the Loring Theater, serve beer and wine to the attendees.
Great. Well, I am familiar with this event. I've attended in previous years. I hope to attend this year, so I know it's a big fundraiser with the Sports Partnership, so I wish you the best.
Your daughter's birthday is the day after, so maybe you can make it this year.
That's correct. That's right. That's great. But thank you, my daughter's birthday.
You're welcome.
All right, Liz, any questions?
I just want to make sure that Chief Jones has reviewed the application.
He has.
Okay. And I see you've requested a detail.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I put the call in, and they actually told me to wait until the week before to call back and set it up.
Okay, excellent.
And the liquor license, I mean, the insurance for liability and liquor liability has been put in place. We don't have the certificate yet because we're paying the premium, and it'll be in a couple days.
Yes. I did go last year. I don't think there were any issues with parking or attendance.
Very smooth, yeah.
It went very smoothly, and it was a lot of fun, so thank you.
Great.
Joe, any questions?
Yes, so I also note that there have not in the past been issues with parking. I think it's fine. My question is, are you going to be doing a stand-up routine?
I am not, thankfully.
Okay, then it'll be success, right? No questions. This is a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Hingham Sports Partnership Incorporated for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Comedy Night 2023 to be held at the Loring Theater on April 2, 2023 from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
All of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries. Ray, just have luck with your event.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you, Ray. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the amendment to agreement with Mass. Pavement Reclamation Incorporated for equipment rental and labor for the Department of Public Works. I believe we have with us J.R. Frye and Kathy Riley this evening. They are on Zoom. So, J.R., I'm going to turn to you first, if you could tell us a little bit about this request, and then we'll go to Kathy for details on the contracting. But go ahead, J.R., turn it to you.
Absolutely. So, Mass. Pavement Reclamation is our contractor. They assist us with driveway improvements throughout town. In particular, they work on the front end of our road reconstruction, doing drainage preparation, as well as where we do full road reclamation. They are the contractor that handles that piece of work. They also handle smaller, smaller scope paving jobs that are done on a time and material basis. They are a, they're a very responsive contractor and assist us. Another piece of their primary work is doing a lot of the sidewalk work, and that's probably where their most visibility is throughout town, where we have specific sidewalk improvements being done. They're a very responsive contractor. They come out when we call them and get the work done in a timely and efficient manner.
Kathy, let me turn to you about the contracting issues. Any concerns on your end, and any details that might help us making a decision tonight?
This is, we did this originally in 2021, and the maximum amount of years you can do a contract for is three years, and so what we'll be approving, what you'll be approving tonight would be the third year. So sometime in the middle of next year, towards the end of this year, maybe, we will be rebidding it in order to have a new award next April '24.
Kathy, thank you. Sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to stop you.
No, it's just a routine sort of amendment. We wrote it in that if it has one year, we renew it each year, so this is the final renewal.
Thank you. J.R., I know that we contract for labor and equipment. Do our personnel use their equipment, or is it just that their personnel using their equipment, and what kind of equipment are we contracting for?
So, it's their personnel using their equipment, and the pricing includes that labor component. So, it's their operators using their own equipment, and it's equipment that they're training to utilize. The largest piece of equipment that they work, that they bring in is a road reclaimer, but beyond that, they have both large, medium, and mini excavators that they bring in to do specific pieces of work. And then they also, on paving jobs, they have their own paving machines, but they also, where we see a lot of benefit is they utilize a sidewalk paver, and that provides for very efficient reconstruction of sidewalks.
J.R., thank you. Joe, any questions?
A couple things on price and terms. So, as I understand, this is an incremental $400,000.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it's on, as needed, based on the rates that they did.
And that's on top?
Under minimum wage.
And that's on top of the $692 in the prior contract?
Yes.
Great.
Right, yeah, each year, they do about, and J.R., you have better field than I do, but they set aside a certain amount in their budget to do reclamation.
And then the term of the agreement, the original term said it would continue until the completion of providing labor work and materials, which no longer than 12 months from the date of commencement, or until the earlier termination. The amendment simply gives a flat date of April 13. So, would it be fair to read this as it's upon, until the completion of providing labor work and materials, which shall be no later than April 13 of 20, of 2024, or until the earlier termination of this agreement? Is that the, is that the appropriate term?
Yes, yeah, that's the very last date, and there won't be anything unless we cancel it before that.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Joe, thank you. Liz?
Yes, just a quick question. So, this would, we would build specific projects on a time and materials basis up to the $400,000 that's budgeted for the year?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you identified those projects already? I'm sure there are many on the list, J.R.
So, primarily, it'll, it's addressing our streets, and this year, we will be repairing Flimm River Road and Loctuck, the Flimm River Road neighborhood, I should say, and Loctuck Road as well. Beyond that, we have utilized them for repairs of patches that were originally done by Weir River Water Service. So, in that case, Weir River Water Service pays for the actual work, but it is accomplished under our contract.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, J.R., Mary Powers in the room, and she's cringing when you say Weir River Water Service, as opposed to Weir River Water System, since she was involved in the naming of this.
I don't, that's, I don't think that's true, J.R.
You already know this.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? Not seen, and I take a motion?
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the amendment to agreement with Mass. Pavement Reclamation, Inc. for equipment rental and labor for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $400,000.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Roddy McGrady Design Collaborative, LLC for the Fire Station One facility upgrades, including roof, facade, and HVAC replacement. J.R., are you going to, you can take the lead on this one as well?
Yes, our Dave Levinson, Deputy Chief Dave Levinson is also available. Deputy Chief Levinson and myself were involved in a selection process, working with Kathy, to go through a, an RFQ process, and at the end of it, we selected Roddy McGrady Design. They are working with the town at the South Shore Country Club on a master plan, on pool, as well as the maintenance building, which is now, it's not nearing completion, but the exterior is complete and looks very good. So, we have experience working with them and quality of their work. We were able to have a, we've had some significant discussions with the design team to, you know, to make sure that the proposals and the, the proposals reflected the work that we needed done, as well as the priorities of the fire department and the timeliness of getting all of the work done, particularly where it relates to the living conditions for the firefighters.
J.R., thank you. Deputy Chief Levinson, anything to add to J.R.'s presentation? Levy, are you there?
He's almost there. I'm having some trouble on that phone.
No problem. Levy, if you could just state your name and position for the record?
Yeah, Deputy Chief Dave Levinson, Fire.
Go ahead, yeah, anything, anything to add to J.R.'s presentation?
No, the company's, we get done work with the town, and it's, it's, it's moving, our costume, we've built a lot of, because I'm doing a project, looking forward to doing it, it's stuff we need to get done.
Levy, thank you. Let me turn to Kathy. Kathy, can you tell, I'm sorry, anything else? All right, I have a little trouble here and you there, Levy. All right, let me turn to Kathy. Yeah, I'm going to turn to, your connection's a little off, so let me just turn to Kathy and see if she has anything to add to the presentation.
I don't have too much to add. It was voted at the town meeting last year, Article 16, to have this work done, so happy to get it moving forward, and hopefully, once this is signed, we can get up and running, so they're not dealing with leaks and holes and other things there at the fire station.
Great. Kathy, thank you. Tom, how much was, how much was voted in this article town meeting last year?
Two point, two point two?
Two point two?
Two million?
Two point two, great.
And again, just so everyone is clear, this is, this is not related to the new fire station. This is improvements to the existing Central Fire Station.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, Liz, any questions?
No questions. I was just going to reiterate that, yes, this money was appropriated at last town meeting, 2.230 million, and I actually have met with Mr. Roddy through some of the work at the country club, so I'm familiar with his work and comfortable with the contract.
Excellent. Joe, any questions?
I'm also comfortable with the contract. I didn't know if they were selected because Roddy McGrady sounded like a music group, a rock band, but, but the fact that we have our, you know, our prior experience, and I've reviewed the contract, I'm comfortable, so no questions.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments on this agenda item? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Roddy McGrady Design Collaborative, LLC for the Fire Station One facility upgrades, including roof, facade, and HVAC replacement in an amount not to exceed $186,160.
Second.
All of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries. Hey, Levy, Levy, before I let you go, just want to thank you. I know you're doing a lot of extra work, helping out with the capital projects with the station, and I know that's in addition to your current duties, and wanted to say thank you for doing that for us. With that, J.R.?
It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Kathy, J.R.
He just wants to see it done right.
Yeah.
As do we all.
He just did it.
Yes.
Always a good reason to get involved. All right, Kathy, J.R., Levy, thanks for your help tonight. Have a good evening. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, next item on the agenda is the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Discussion. Tonight, we are going to be discussing Article D, which is the report of the Personnel Board, and I think?
We just texted, they're, they're just starting their meeting.
Okay.
They'll be done that soon, and soon as they are, Dave will come down.
All right, so I'm going to table that, I'm going to table that item and move to item eight, which is to open the 2023 Town Meeting Warrant for submission of a warrant article from the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust regarding 270 Central Street, Hingham, Massachusetts. I knew, I see Susan Murphy on the line. Susan, good evening. If you could just state your name and position with the town for the record?
I'm Susan Murphy, Special Real Estate Counsel to the Town.
We have Jennifer Orem.
And we have Jennifer as well, Jack Falvey, I think, is she Jack? Jack, who, who wants to take the lead on this one? Jennifer or Susan? Jennifer, why don't you start us off?
All right.
Yep, go ahead, yep.
Can we just start from here?
No, actually, if you go to the podium, Jennifer, just state your name and position with the town, that'd be great.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Jennifer Orem, the zoning administrator for the town. I also work with the Affordable Housing Trust. Chair Jack Falvey is in the audience with us. As you know, we're requesting to amend the existing deed that is on 270 Central Street. The reason being is that the previous deed has restrictions placed upon it that although it's still an affordable unit, it wouldn't be part of our SHI, which we want that to be as part of, so we can keep our percentage going up and stable beyond the 11% that we currently have. The existing deed has language in it that, again, keeps it affordable and allows it to go to certain, has certain restrictions, so we could maintain that, but I think that our goal is really to continue to add units to the SHI, which is why we're requesting to move forward with this.
Great, thank you. Jack, do you want to add anything?
I don't think so, thanks, Bill.
Okay, great. Susan, do you want to add anything to Jennifer's presentation?
Yes. There's one substantive difference between what's currently in the, in the need restriction that the town has, and from what the town will have if these restrictions are released and the DHTD form of these restrictions attached. Now, that difference is that the 1994 restriction includes what's known as a local preference, which is that a home can only be sold to a former or current resident of the town of Hingham or an employee of the town of Hingham. So, but DHTD does not allow that for a single unit. If you had a development, a multiple unit, with the DHTD's written permission, the town could, or the project could have a local preference above the SHI, so whereas one single unit, you cannot have local preference and have it qualified to the SHI. So, that would be the trade-off for the town. The benefit to the town of that trade-off is that one affordable unit offsets 10 market-rate units, and at this point, market-rate units are being constructed at a bad showcase than affordable units. So, you know, there's a possibility the town could find itself below 10% if it doesn't add affordable units. So, that would be the benefit to the town, but there would be that the loss of the local preference on the unit, on the house.
Susan, thank you. Joe, any questions?
Yes, the current resident, they would not be displaced by this, by the change in the deed, is that correct?
Correct. Sadly, they passed away, and the town has purchased the property.
So, but, but in terms of, is it currently unoccupied?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no current tenant that would be affected either way?
Correct.
Okay. And the SHI, that's the subsidized housing inventory that we, that the DHTD uses for its count. I mean, from my perspective, this is a goal that the town has been working towards. We've achieved, and I think we need to do what we can to, to maintain it. And while there may not be a local preference, once someone moves into that unit, they are a resident of Hingham. So, it's not as if the residency goes away by this. In fact, it's local preference with respect to pre-existing residents, as opposed to someone who becomes a new resident. Is that correct, Susan?
That's correct, and also, there's no prohibition against you going to a, or a former resident of Hingham or an employee, but it would be part of a lottery, you know, recor-.
Yep, yep. No other questions. Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I had the opportunity to review this with the Affordable Housing Trust, and they voted unanimously to make this change, which I support.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Seeing none, I take a motion?
So, I move to open the 2023 Town Meeting Warrant for submission of warrant article EE, revise and update restrictions to 270 Central Street, to recommend favorable action on said article, and to close the warrant.
Second.
All of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries. Jennifer, good to see you. Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Bye.
All right, that takes us to Agenda Item Nine, which is?
Yeah.
Agenda Item Nine, which is the FY '24 Financial Forecast Update. Return to Tom and Michelle.
Michelle will walk us through the most recent forecast.
All right, excellent.
All right, it gets a little small for people. Try to zoom in a little bit. All right, so I believe our last forecast update was at the very end of January or the beginning of February, when we were looking at the quarter-two revenue. This is our second-to-last forecast before, we'll do one final one when the budget is finalized in the next week or so, but I'll just kind of quickly go top to bottom through the highlights here. So, we're looking at the, the middle column, the FY '24 forecast, and the sources are the revenues on the top, and the uses or the expenditures are on the bottom. So, some of the things that we updated in red here are the debt exclusions. We updated our debt service schedule based on what we borrowed for the foster and public safety projects a couple weeks ago, then updated our projections for the out years. I also do want to highlight up here this number in yellow. This is for new growth. Linden Ponds has signaled that they are building a new memory care facility and have started to pull some permits for that. I think it's estimated at about $18 million. So, in working with our Director of Assessing, we're expecting potentially about $150,000 in new growth in FY '26 or so, and that's something we'll keep an eye on in the coming years. If I move down a little bit to state aid here, the Governor's First Budget Proposal just came out for state aid that the town receives. It was actually a bit lower than we were hoping, so that made the deficit widen a little bit here, but towards the bottom, you see here that the state assessments, meaning the money that we pay to the state, was also lower, so that helped us a bit. But overall, the Governor's budget had us basically widen our deficit by about $100,000. The Board of Assessors last week voted right here to release $150,000 in excess overlay, so that helped us a little bit. And then going down, Capital Outlay also made their recommendations, which just ended up being about $3,000 short of the budget, so we put that actual number in here. I think the, the main changes were in Article Six, and that was driven by the debt service numbers above. Those are awash, so the excluded debt that we, in terms of tax revenue on top, is matched to debt service costs on the bottom of this. But the two other items were the DPW contract settled, so that increased DPW's budget for FY '24, making Article Six get bigger. And last Friday, we got the new health insurance rates for the GIC, and that decreased our budget by about $300,000, $350,000, so that helped us. The final change was in Article Four here, so because the DPW contract settled, those budgets, budgeted amounts are in Article Six and therefore came out of Article Four. Overall, right now, the deficit in terms of level services and keeping what we have in town is just over $6 million, so that's down by about $200,000 from the last formal forecast. Are there any questions?
Just one question. I know the Governor's, Governor's budget's coming a little lower than we anticipated, which is a little bit of a disappointment, but it is what it is. It goes, I know it goes to the House and the Senate for approval. In past years, any, any chance that's going to get increased? I know it could be increased, but if it, how often does that happen? And if it does, what have we seen to be in a percentage of increase?
Sure, so what we've seen in the past is the Governor's budget is released around now, and it was, and then the legislature will take it up, and they'll do their work. In recent years, I can tell you, it's almost always gone up from the, from the Governor's budget, which will be helpful, but we have no idea how much that will be, and it's not normally done as helpful as ever. It's not normally done until the very end of June, so.
End of June?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just add to that, this, unlike in the past couple years, we now have the Governor and the legislature of the same party, so there may be a difference in how this, this works out.
That's true.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Michelle. Joe, do you have any questions?
I do, and I think I know the answer. I just want to make sure that we can get it on the record. So, if we go up to the, the bump from eight hun, from Linden Ponds, which bumped it up to $800,000, it shows as a one-time bump, but presumably, the revenue continues, and the reason, I'm assuming, is that that line is only new growth, and after the first year, it's baked into the numbers, so it's not considered new anymore.
That's correct. So, this $800,000 that you see in FY '26 is, is part of the FY '27 base levy here, this 101, so that's how it kind of gets baked in going forward. The 650 that you see kind of steady in the other years is, represents sort of our base level of new growth, the normal additions and renovations that people do on their homes or businesses around town. Anything above that are sort of larger projects like this. Anything above that are sort of larger projects like this that might come in.
Right, so the, the point being that the new growth doesn't go away, but it's no longer considered new because it was...
Right, that's correct.
Yep, no other questions, thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Michelle, what else are we waiting on in terms of getting to the next forecast that you're referring to?
Really, it's just the final approved budget numbers from everyone. So at this point, the deficit is, in terms of what we would need to fill the gap to get to level services, to the extent that this board and the Advisory Committee would like to add additional capacity through a proposed override, the deficit would widen, and then at that point, the deficit and the override would be equal to each other. So it's really just the final approved budget numbers or recommended budget numbers.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Art, can you, can you go back to the Zoom to see if anybody on Zoom has any questions? If anybody on Zoom has, have any questions this evening, if you could just raise your, your hand virtually or physically, and I'll do my best to pick you up here in the crowd. Okay, see you, none. All right, if there are no questions, then we would turn to Item 10, which is a discussion and potential vote of the FY24 proposed budget and FY24-28 Financial Management Plan. And I know, Tom, you going to take this one?
Sure, yep. Great, thank you. All right, so we've got a little bit of a presentation here to make, we're going to walk through three different components. First, we'll walk through some slides, I'll try to summarize everything for everybody so everyone can see how things, how things played out through the budget process. Then when that's done, we're, we have what's, what we're referring to as a override framework and FY24-28 Financial Management Plan. We're going to walk through that document step by step. And then when that's done, we're going to open up the, the model, the financing model that we use, and we'll show everyone how we're able to fulfill the requirements of the financial, the new financial management plan within the, within the framework of the model, all right? Okay, so we'll walk through, in this presentation, we'll walk through a series of categories, we'll bounce back and forth between myself and Michelle and Art as we walk through this. I'll start with the first few categories and turn it over. We'll start with a little bit of how we got here very quickly, then we'll talk about the balanced budget, the recommended budget, and then remember the recommended budget is the level services plus additional requests. And then Michelle will walk us through some tax impacts and, and tax relief programs that we have, the anticipated tax impacts and the tax relief programs that we have in place. I'll, I'll summarize the FY24-28 Financial Management Plan that I just mentioned, and then Art will walk us through the outreach efforts. Okay, so just for some context, just a couple of very quick slides, you've seen this one before. You know, we, the, we entered the '24 budget season with a real deficit. It's, it's a result of adding critical capacity in past years. Most of that was the, was related to COVID-19 and the pandemic, as we all remember. The other thing I, I always like to point out is that we're not alone here, there's significant pressure on municipalities to provide services, the services that people have come to expect of local government within two and a half percent increase on an, on an annual basis. Frankly, expenditures are outpacing the two and a half percent growth rate of revenues. So, and the other piece of that too is that new growth has really, has really stagnated in Hingham. I'll point out that a number of years ago, Hingham did a great thing and accomplished our 10% affordable housing goals, which was a, a long-term goal for the town, and is something that we're very proud of. But on the flip side of that coin, what that means is that developers that were otherwise bringing larger developments like Avalon and Broadstone Bear Cove and Brio and some of these other developments into the town, they're not coming to town right now. They're going to other places where, where they can, where they can control their projects a little bit more. So we are obviously pursuing economic development efforts in South Hingham and elsewhere, and will continue to do so, but we, we are, we are working in that new reality in the last few years, and that's certainly exacerbated some of these problems. We did use in '22 some one-time federal funds and local reserves in order to balance the budget, and what that means is that in order to bridge that gap, the, the gap that was created by the use of those one-time monies, we're going to have to either reduce services, which is the balanced budget that I'm going to go through next, or we're going to have to raise recurring revenue, which is the override proposal that I'm going to go through after the balanced budget. Just a reminder, 2021, Bob Curley told us that for '23, we were likely going to need an override. And then in February of '22, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force told us the same, that we would likely need an override for FY24. And then last year, at Town, at Annual Town Meeting, Julie Straley, Chair of AdCom, reminded us that in 2023's Annual Town Meeting, we would likely need an override. So this is not new, this is not unanticipated. Okay, the balanced budget, we'll walk through this real, pretty quickly here. The, the town is required, I've, I've mentioned this before, that it's required by state law to provide a balanced budget. So that's what we're going to do, that will be in the warrant, it'll be a budget that matches projected revenue to expenses. That is showing on our books, a $6,015,216 deficit between our projected expenditures and our projected revenues. So we're going to have to reduce our budget by $6 million in order to provide a balanced budget to the meeting. In order to do that, we took a, I think, a fairly measured approach. We, we really held five to five, five main goals, which was to obviously meet any contractual obligations and legal requirements. We wanted to, we identified and wanted to maintain our core municipal services. We identified the new positions that were added in FY21 especially, and that those had been removed from the budget in order to meet that $6 million. And then we also tried to spread the impact of those reductions across municipal departments and service sectors. And then, of course, we want to demonstrate those impacts to the community, which I think we've done in several different settings. So if the override in fact fails, those cuts would be put into effect on July 1st, 2023. So these are the, the service sector, proposed municipal reductions. We're looking at the total of 19.4 full-time employees and $2.1 million, which represents approximately 35% of that total $6,015,000 that we saw earlier. So that, those are, these are the projected reductions in the, in the sectors. Okay, so the FY24 recommended budget. This is, again, this is the recommended budget by myself, the school committee has voted a budget, and these are level services and additional requests. So I'm recommending all of the level services from FY23 as a starting point. So what that means is the $6 million gets added back in and we're able to move forward with our same services we provided the year prior. On top of that, I'm recommending $673,377 of additional requests. That's out of a total of $1.16 million of requested additional requests from the department heads. And I'm also requesting or, or recommending a $500,000 infusion into the capital budget. The capital budget has actually fallen in recent years outside of the financial policy of the Advisory Committee that requires that it be 3% to 6% of annual, annual budget, I believe, right?
Operating budget.
Operating budget. And it had fallen outside of that, it was down to 2.7% or so. So now we're, we're putting it back into within, within the, within the 3% to 6%. I think we're up, with this $500,000, it would put at approximately 3.2%. The school committee has recommended their level services budget. In addition to that, they are further recommending $701,874 of the total, $1.5 million that had been identified as their unmet needs. And then the, a total of, that all feeds into a total override of $7.89 million, which is, which results in a total Article Six recommended budget of $147,793,65. And that is, to the extent the, the Select Board votes, that would be the number that you would see at the bottom. Okay, so what is in the additional requests? We've talked about this at a prior meeting with the Select Board on the municipal side, it's an Assistant Town Engineer, a Program Coordinator for the Senior Center, both of those have been requested for many years and have, I'm recommending them this year. The Veterans Administrative Assistant, that is a move, a moving part-time position to a full-time position. Right now, we're filling that position with, after two failed attempts at staffing it, we're now filling it with volunteers, and, and I'm afraid that that trend is going to have to continue until we can fund this position properly and get somebody qualified and interested in coming and staying and working a full-time job for us. The, excuse me, the Sustainability Coordinator, this is a position that we funded last year, but we funded it partially and in the expenses line. And what we've done is we've hired a consultant to do this work, they're working two-thirds of their hours on, for the town of Hingham and one-third for the town of Cohasset, and that is actually, luckily and thankfully, being funded through a, an earmark of the state legislature at the end of last year. So that $49,000 that we've spent is not being, is not being utilized and will drop to fund balance at the end of the year, which is helpful. So, but I'm recommending that we move that position into a permanent full-time position for the town of Hingham and to work within the salary line. And then we're also adding a $50,000 line item for budgeting software for the last several decades. I'm guessing the town has been budgeting utilizing Excel tables and, and Excel programs, and that's, it's just, what it ma, what it does is it makes it very difficult to communicate our budgeting process with the public. And I think the public needs to better understand the budgeting process, how it works, and then the results along the way, trends, et cetera. And we, we can do that in a far more transparent and clear way if we had modern software. So I'm recommending adding that into the, into the additional requests. The big item in the additional request this year is for, on the municipal side, is the four full-time firefighters. And while that sounds like a lot of people, it's actually just one firefighter per shift. And what it allows us to do is to move our maximum, they call it maximum manning, it's probably an old term, but we, it's the, it's the maximum number of firefighters that can be on shift at any one time. And by moving that up a person, what that allows us to do is to be fully staffed before we reach the minimum manning of 11? Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
Of 11. So we'd, when we get to 11 and drop below it, we have to call people in on overtime. And, and right now, we're finding that that's just a far too regular occurrence. Our overtime budget alone last year was $1.7 million. So that can't continue, we know that, that has to be fixed. Bringing in new firefighters, raising that, raising that maximum manning number by one will allow us to, will allow us to fill the, the shifts without the need for overtime in a more regular basis. Then I've mentioned already the capital outlay and why we're doing that, $500,000. The, the school department has recommended, and the school committee has, I believe, voted, a recommend, a recommended additional request number of 701-874. That was for the reduction of school technology costs in the capital outlay by 300,000, moving that into their budget, putting the nursing coordinator, a new nursing coordinator position in, some professional development needs to $200,000, and offsetting some full-day kindergarten fees by $86,700. So that's for a grand total of additional requests of $1,875,251. All right, projected tax impacts.
Okay, so as Tom mentioned, with those additional requests that he just went through in the previous slide, we are looking at a $7.9 million override for FY24. I know this is very, this is too small to see in this slide clearly, I can bring it up in the model in a little bit, and I think the next slide will clarify it. But what we're showing here is the projected tax impact for the median assessed value in Hingham. Right now, the median assessed property is just under $900,000. What you're seeing here in the blue bars, again, I realize people can't actually see this right now, the blue bars represents the, the normal growth of the tax bill, sort of your base tax bill at the $900,000 level. What you see in the orange bar on top of that is the projected impact of the override, and what you see in the yellow on top of that is the projected tax impact of the two debt exclusion projects that we approved in November of 2022, so Foster Elementary School and the Public Safety Facility. In FY24, the base property tax bill is $9,393. On top of that, in the orange for the override, the projected override impact would be $751. And on top of that, the Foster and Public Safety Facility impact would be $241. I think the next slide shows this better. But I do want to point out, so the tax bill in blue normally, grows normally by the usual 2.5% plus the CPA surcharge and any other excluded debt that the town has approved in the past. The orange override bar will grow by 2.5% a year because it gets built into the new base for property taxes. And then the yellow bar is the debt service, a lot of that are projections right now because we've only borrowed for the first year. These numbers also reflect using the $7 million in the stabilization fund that the town also approved and set up in the fall.
For the two debt exclusions?
For, for Foster and the Public Safety Facility. This slide, hopefully people can read, it's a little bit easier to see. So this slide is looking at next year, so FY24, the projected tax impact at three levels of properties in town. So the yellow column shows you the 25th percentile, the, the green column shows you that median, again, like just under $900,000, and the blue column shows you the 75th percentile. This kind of allows people, it breaks the town into four quadrants, and it kind of allows you to see based on your assessed value where you might fall in, in terms of the tax impact. So the 25th percentile right now, this is all after the revow that was done in the fall, that property value is about 658,000, the median's at just under 900,000, and the 75th percentile is a little over 1.2 million. So the first row here is the base FY24 property tax bill. If we do no override, or you don't count the, the debt exclusions from the fall, the base property tax bill, I'll focus on the green column, the median, is that 930, uh, $9,393. Adding to that is this estimated tax impact for the, for the override of 751, and I'm adding to that the first year of debt service cost for Foster School and Public Safety, which is $241. So that brings the FY24 projected tax bill for the median person to $10,385. At all three of these levels, it's about, it's just under an 11% tax increase for that So Tom is prompting, we will be putting, once the, the final override number is finalized in the next few days, next week, after the Advisory Committee votes, we will be putting a tax impact calculator on the website where people can go and select their actual address to see how much we're estimating that it might cost, you know, that, that homeowner in terms of the override. We do want to look at, so I know right here we're talking about the median in green, the state collects data based on the average single-family property tax bill, which is higher than our median, but looking at our benchmark towns right now in FY23, Hingham's average single-family property tax bill is about, is $11,177. To try to show how the impact of the override and the two debt exclusions from the fall would, would move us in terms of this group, we've basically run it through the model that, the financial planning model that John Asher's helped us build, and that moves the $11,177 to $12,917, again, for the average single-family, uh, single-family property tax bill. For the other towns in this group, we don't know if they're proposing overrides or debt exclusions in FY24, so all we've done for the other communities is move them forward by 2.5%. So between these two slides, you can see that Hingham basically switches place with Norwell, so we move, we're in the middle, we're still in the middle, but we move one place to the left. And again, this includes the impact of both the override and the first year of the Foster and Public Safety Projects. We want to make sure, as we're talking about the override and asking folks to make this investment in the town, that people know that there are many resources available for tax exemptions and relief. This is a slide we've shown many times, but the town has over 12 different programs for tax relief. There's programs like tax work-off programs as well as tax exemptions that are available to people. We've listed here on the right side the FY23 maximum benefit available to eligible people. The number, the second one here, the senior means tested tax exemption, is something that the town put in place two years ago, and that one is able, you're able to get that one in addition... And that one is able, you're able to get that one in addition to one of the other exemptions here. So that's an add-on if you qualify for one of the other categories here. We're also adding, through this town meeting, there's a couple articles that would further expand tax relief for folks. So we have Article M, which would permanently extend the new Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption. When that was set up, it was kind of set to be renewed or to expire after three years. So we're proposing that we take out the, the expiration date of that. We have an article that would increase the maximum amount available to veterans who participate in our Veterans Tax Work-Off Program. So that would raise it from $1,500 a year to $1,875 a year. And then we have a final article that would double all of the current exemptions, the rest of the exemptions on that list for folks who apply, or who, for who qualify for those. We've also been doing a lot of outreach. We were able to increase the participation in the Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption by 300% between the first year last year and the second year this year. And we're trying to figure out, you know, what, we only have those two data points. The first year, there are about 20, 20 or 24 people who qualified for that. The second year, there was close to 90 people who qualified for that. We're trying to figure out what that growth might look like over the next few years. So we'll continue to work on our outreach there. And we're also doing a second campaign based on all the exemptions that are due April 1st. The best place for anyone looking to figure out, looking for some help trying to see what they may qualify for is to talk to our assessing office. They are friendly, outgoing, very knowledgeable. Feel free to call them. People stop by. They email them. But it's, I think it's best to talk to them either on the phone or in person because if you're, if you kind of look at the list and think, maybe I don't fit into those categories, they're really good at trying to figure out based on your situation what programs might be right to you, right for you. So please, don't hesitate to reach out or to sort of send folks their way.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. So the Financial Management Plan, otherwise known as the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, we've used a few different terms going through as we've been developing this. But I'll, and again, when we're done with this portion of this PowerPoint, we're going to open the MOU, we're going to walk through, walk everybody through it in detail. And then when we're done with that, we'll go back through the, through the model to show, show the, the analysis through the model. So it's intended to be a tri-party agreement. This is very similar to the FY21 Financial Management Plan that we used at the beginning of the pandemic. It would be signed in, in theory by the Select Board, the School Committee, as well as the Advisory Committee. I'm also proposing that Dr. Adams and myself sign this document as will be responsible for implementing and managing our way through that, through that process during the course of the number of years of the, of the plan. Okay, so some of the key terms here is we're, we're anticipating, or we're proposing in this management plan that there would not be a need for another, another override until FY28. In fact, that the town is committing to not bringing another override to the town until FY, to town meeting, until FY28 at the earliest. Further, both the municipal departments and the school department will commit to a growth rate of, an annual growth rate of 3.5%. The override amount in FY24 would be $7.89 million. And the school department will have access to the reserve fund transfer process for any out-of-district special education tuitions and specialized contracts that exceed 2%, that exceeded 2% increase. So some of the further commitments that we've worked into the document, and again, we'll get into this in more detail in a minute. We're committing to pursuing economic development opportunities, seeking efficiencies in operations. We've already started those conversations. I'll just note here that while it's always our goal to work as efficiently as possible, as a wise person, very recently said to me, necessity is the mother of invention. So when we're living through austere times, like we may over the next few years, there are likely to be efficiencies that we will be seeking out and implementing. So that, I welcome certainly those changes. We will continue to fund capital within the financial policy guideline. We'll also continue to fund the other post-employment benefits, i.e. healthcare and retirement for our employees. And we will continue also to advance the tax relief programs that Michelle just walked everyone through. We'll also seek new non-tax revenue sources to the extent possible. That could take any one of a number of, of forms. The Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, under Liz and Michelle's guidance, with the school committee and everybody last year, identified a number of places where there are potential non-tax revenue sources. We need to capitalize on those. We need to find them and, and make them happen. And then we also obviously identified the AAA credit rating as, as an important goal to maintain that. All right, I'll turn it over to Art Robert to walk us through the outreach efforts.
Thanks, Tom. Just an important part of moving towards town meeting is communicating and engaging with the, the community regarding all the work that you've heard about and getting excellent opportunities to hear from, hear from residents about, about the plan and having opportunities to answer questions. And we've, we've developed an approach that includes many different pieces, but they're intended to reinforce each other and rely on multiple media. You know, first and foremost, we're, as we did in the fall, we're planning public information sessions on the 30th of March and the 11th of April. The first will be in a face-to-face format in Sanborn Auditorium here in Town Hall. And on the 11th, we'll, we'll be doing it by Zoom, providing flexible options for folks in the community. We are talking with Lyndon Pons and we were very close to settling on a final date to have some time with the senior community there to educate them on everything that's been done up to this point. As in the fall, we're planning a, an information mailer to send to all residents that's intended to reach mailboxes here in Hingham, no later than the 22nd of March. And we are also working on informational videos that will talk at a high level about a number of the points that you heard about this evening. Encourage folks to go to our, our website to learn more and capture much more of the detail. We finished recording the first two today. And we'll be releasing videos one, once a week over the next five weeks. We're certainly looking for opportunities to, to engage in Select Board-driven office hour types meetings and what we'll be looking at for options to do that. We're looking to take our message forward to the community through Harbor Media and other, other local news outlets. And we are also using the Senior Center newsletter as a means to, to communicate to folks. What, what's not here, but it's also very important is that each one of these components will have a social media dimension so that as we announce different components, make them available online, conduct these, these, these public information sessions and the like, we'll also be releasing information onto our website and also through Facebook to help get the, the messages and, and the opportunities deeper into the community. And I would encourage anybody who's interested to, you know, reshare those posts through your own Facebook accounts to be sure that they move forward and deeper into the community. And that's it in a nutshell.
Sorry, we're having some audiovisual problems next door. Okay. Thank you, Art. So did you walk through the website?
Did not. This, what, what you have here is just the front, the top of our information hub that we're developing for, for the override. It includes, in overtime, will include all the elements that we have talked about. We're certainly noticing the, the latest activities that we're conducting, providing background presentations. We've got an FAQ section, as Michelle mentioned earlier. We're on the, we're very close to deploying a tax calculator on this page so people can see how the proposed override will affect them personally. And also importantly, just give people the opportunity to reach back to us. We've, we've received several inquiries by email. We expect to receive more, you know, in the coming weeks. And we certainly look forward to engaging with folks by that means as well.
And the, so just a reminder to everybody that the override, an override approval requires the budget appropriations through Article 6 by a majority vote at town meeting on April 24th. And it requires passage by a majority vote at the ballot of a ballot question that would be put forward as well. And that's on April 29th, on the following Saturday. If people have questions on the, on any of what we just covered, on any issues regarding the override, again, we recommend that people attend or take a look at the, at the website. Okay, so I'm going to go from here over to the Financial Management Plan. And be patient with me. I'm not as quick as Michelle is on these things. Well, the good news is I don't, is I don't think anyone actually is. I feel less bad. Just want to make this as visible for people as possible. Okay. So as of now, we're dating it March 9th. Again, titled "The FY24 Override Framework and 24 to 28 Financial Management Plan." I'm not going to read the document all the way through. I think that would be a bit much, but...
Maybe just the purpose.
Oh, sure. I can, yeah, I'm happy to read the purpose, absolutely. So the purpose of this document is to make a public commitment to the residents and taxpayers of the town of Hingham to implement a financial management plan, i.e. the plan, in conjunction with a proposed operational override for fiscal year 2024. The Select Board, the School Committee, the Advisory Committee all, all acknowledge the necessity of following the plan's parameters and pledge to work together in fiscal years 24 through 28 in order to achieve balanced budgets consistent with the plan's fiscal constraints. That, in a nutshell, is what we're trying to do. I, I think we're there. I, I feel like this is a pretty good management plan. It's been discussed at length with, with the leadership of all three, all three groups. So I'm feeling pretty good about that. As, we also felt it was important as we, as we got into the body of the document to, to identify and define some of the terms that we throw around. Me especially, very willy-nilly, everybody, I assume everyone knows everything I'm talking about all the time, and that's absolutely not fair. So we wanted to define the doc, the terms and make sure that everybody is, is thinking the same thing when we, when we're using these terms. So we, we define the, things like the forecast group, again, a term I use all the time. There is a very defined set of people that are, that participate in that. We're defining the term-level services. The municipal budget is also further defined. So what that means to us may not be what it would, you would think it would mean to the general public. So we wanted to make sure for equation purposes in future years that we have defined the, both the municipal budget and the, the educational budget. And the out-of-district concept is, is built into this as well. We've defined a few of those terms, including the special ed tuitions and special education contracts. And we have an appendix in here to help us, help us with explaining that. Again, the school budget is, is defined here as well. Shared services is another concept we talk regularly about. That's been defined. The town, depending who you talk to, that means different things, so we thought we'd define it. And then, of course, totally annual expenditures is an important concept because it's referred to several times in the financial management policy. And I'm about to be rescued by Michelle, so I don't have to run this thing anymore. A number of acknowledgements are baked into this. And I'm going to read this section as well. I think it's important. "In an effort to exercise fiscal discipline while continuing to provide quality municipal and educational services, we acknowledge that budgetary limitations in each fiscal year may require the town to prioritize the utilization of available resources in order to achieve the plan's goals. The town administrator and school superintendent will be responsible for proposing and implementing prioritizations, recognizing that this may lead to reductions or limitations in municipal and school departmental activities and plans. While current boards and committees cannot bind their successes, we expect that future boards and committees will honor and respect the, the public pledge of fiscal management consistent with this plan's parameters." So we are acknowledging that, in fact, you, you really, we really can't technically confine a future board or a future town meeting for that matter. But this is a public pledge and, and we're certainly expecting that that will be honored just the way the FY21 management plan was. Okay, so we start out with some of our, our commitments. And right off the bat, it's that the town will seek an operational override of the $7.89 million number that we had spoke about earlier in my presentation. And further, that we won't seek another override until FY28. There are a number, I'm sorry?
Are you screen sharing this to the presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's in there. Yeah. It is, so there are a number of tools that we're giving ourselves to do that. We're capping our growth rates, right? That's what this section is.
Yep.
The growth rate caps are at 3.5% again, for the schools and for the town. And, and you can see the numbers and what that equates to. We even give an example. So for future purposes, we'll be able to follow that formula from the F, the numbers in 23 to make sure that we're applying the numbers in future fiscal years in the same way and getting, getting those budget numbers accordingly. So the, and then we do that both for the annual operating budget and the school budget. So keep going. So one of the twists to this, to this concept was the use of out-of-district special education costs. I will read this section. It's, it's, it feels complicated. It's simple in theory, difficult to employ. But we've, we've done a number of projections and anticipated, anticipated costs. So I'm going to walk us through this in a little bit more detail because this is less intuitive than perhaps the, the rest of the document. So within the school budget, the out-of-district special education tuitions and special education contracts, i.e. transportation, specialized services, as outlined in Appendix A, we'll show you that in a minute, will be considered as a separate category for growth calculations due to, due to the unknown and uncontrollable nature of these expenditures. The, I can explain that a little bit right here. So, and Ayesha is in the audience. Feel free to come to the microphone and rescue me when you want to. But I'm going to do my best. So these are, the nature of these, of these expenses are that folks can move to the community at any point during the course of the year. And to the extent that their school-aged child has special needs, those, the, the receiving town will, will be responsible over, over time for incurring the costs of those special, of that special needs education. And that might include special needs outside of our, our school district's ability to provide. So we'd have to send them to different, different facilities. So sometimes those can be, those can be extensive costs. But the school department has never been able to, it's an unknown. You don't know when people are going to move from one town to the next. So it's an unknown scenario. So because this is such a wild card for the school budget, the school department has asked that we incorporate the concept of allowing them anything beyond their normal expenditures of, or increases of 2% to be able to be covered through the reserve fund process, the reserve fund transfer process, which in essence uses the initial reserve fund, but then that reserve fund is bolstered each year through Article 11 out of the, out of the general fund. Okay. Do I need to read through all the math components of this, or is that clear? Well, all right, let's keep going down. Want me to cover more of it?
You can say it a bit after.
Yeah, no, let's just, yeah, let's walk through it and answer questions. So we'll also note that changes in the school enrollment during this period will not impact the school department's growth as stated above. So to the extent that some of these, some of the lost, I say lost, some of the students that went elsewhere during the pandemic, they may decide to come back to, to the district. We're certainly hopeful that happens. But that won't affect the, the growth, the budget growth commitments. And then, so some, some service and reductions or increased fees would also maybe necessary in FY25, '27, depending on, on, on a number of things, including and probably most heavily, the costs of, of personnel, most likely costs of personnel. So to the extent that either the municipal, the municipal side or the school side is in, is not capable of living to that, or, or funding the three, their growth rate needs to exceed 3.5%, we would have to reduce services within. Okay. We are, in order to get to that four-year window, we're proposing the creation of a tax mitigation stabilization fund and seeding it with a million dollars from fund balance here in FY24. That's another article on the warrant. And the purpose for that, and we'll show you this more, it becomes clearer in, in the, in the next presentation when we bring up the, the model, but it'll allow us to apply money from fund balance, which in, in, not in large, but in, in component parts, is returned operation, operating funds from the bud, from the annual budgets on a regular basis. So, every year, any money through the annual budget that goes unspent gets dropped in total to the fund balance, and now we're looking to repurpose some of those funds through a tax mitigation stabilization fund that we'll be able to hold on to, so when out years, when, when we're in deficit, we'll be able to apply money from the stabilization fund to get us through to FY28 before we would need another override. Okay, and then, you know, the other, the other, I refer to them as levers. The other lever that we would have to pull to help us get through to FY28 would be any excess overlay funds, and we'll, again, we'll show you how we're, how we're proposing to use those funds. Okay, in general, a general budgeted surplus in operational revenue, excess revenue should be earmarked for the tax mitigation stabilization fund to the extent that that happens. Okay, so some of the other commitments, I talked about these briefly in the presentation, but again, we will continue to seek economic development efforts. Robert is the head of our economic development team, working with Emily Wentworth on the second floor here at Town Hall, and has already initiated several meetings with some large property owners in, in South Hingham. We've heard from MWRA and, and their interest in, in bringing, helping the communities on the south shore and elsewhere to, to foster some economic development efforts by allowing us to get some sewer and water connect, connectivity. We're going to be, we will, like I talked about earlier, we'll seek efficiencies both on the municipal and school sides, hopefully working together, as we have been very, very well lately. The town will continue to fund the capital outlay. We will fund the financial management plan. We'll continue, excuse me, will not be construed as preclude, this is a really key point, will not be construed as constru, as restricting any future debt exclusions. So, there might be a need for a large capital project between now and FY28. This plan is about operational expenses only, so it does not stop or promote in any way. It's silent to the concept of large, of larger capital projects that would need a debt exclusion. During the five-year period, again, we'll, we'll continue to fund OPEB costs, and we will make sure that we seek, continue to seek and promote the tax relief programs. We will also, I talked a little bit about non-tax revenue sources. We'll continue to, yeah, there are a number of great ones identified in that report, and we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with those in future fiscal years, I think. And then, we're going to maintain the bond rating, and then the last one was, "In the event of any extraordinary or unforeseen external circumstances, such as major natural disasters, public health emergencies, significant economic crises, crisis, this plan may be subject to review at the request of all three signatory boards." You know, if we get another pandemic, knocking on wood, if something like that happens, a significant economic crisis like in 2008, not, not just a downturn, right? It's got to be, it's got to be a significant event to trigger this, and then again, all three boards would have to agree to open this, this agreement. Okay, if the override fails, I talked a little bit about this. I'm not going to get into too much detail here. I talked about this in the presentation. If the override fails, we would, we would apply the cuts that we've identified and live to the, live to the budget that we have available at that time. And by the way, just the last point on that slide, on that section, is that the remainder of the financial management plan, in the event that the, that the override fails, would not be, would need to reevaluate our, our approach on an annual basis. This is about if the override, the, most of this plan is about if the override passes, how we're going, how we're going to move forward. If the override fails, then this plan is not in effect. Okay, so what we're proposing, again, is a tri-party agreement. We would ask the school board, the select board, and the advisory committee to vote to allow their, their respective chairs to sign the document. We've, this language is, for the proposed votes, is very much borrowed from the FY21 financial management plan, so it should be, it should be recognizable. We'll continue now past all those, and you'll see myself and, and Dr. Adams identified as signatories. Again, we talked about that from an operational standpoint. And I just wanted to point out the appendices, so to help further explain the out-of-district special ed tuition concept, we've attached an appendix for FY24 and, or is this, this is 23?
24.
24. So, for FY24, yeah, the FY24 balances. So, this is what's, what we're anticipating to see through the out-of-district sped costs. And then, finally, the last appendix is an attempt at, at identifying the maximum budget amounts for each of the fiscal years. That's assuming a 3.5% growth. So, and again, we, we recognize that the out-of-district, the surprise out-of-district amounts would be, would be something that would, the reserve fund would be available for. Okay? Great. Now, let's open the model and show the wizardry of John Asher. You want to walk him through this? Michelle will take this one.
Okay, so, actually, I think he is on the line potentially. So, John Asher, our volunteer extraordinaire, very helpfully added some functionality to the financial planning model that we've been using for the last few years. He was able to build in a tab where we can manipulate the five-year forecast in the document so that we can kind of look at different scenarios. So, what we've done for this one is, we've loaded it with the budget that Tom just recommended. Let me just go down. So, you can see here at the bottom, so this includes the level services, all the additional requests that Tom recommended, and the additional requests that the school committee recommended, so it's leading to this, this override amount of 7.89 million. So, in, using John's model, we have plugged in that amount for an FY24 override, and what we wanted to focus on tonight, this is, it's a very complex model, so we'll try to, try to zoom in on things that, so people can follow us. Basically here, you're looking at the next few fiscal years across the top. What this model assumes is a 3.5% growth rate overall for the municipal and school departments. The main line to focus on really is this blue line, line 81 here, which shows the deficit at the end of each fiscal year with these assumptions. So, in fiscal '24, because we do the override, we fill the gap. I know it says $3 is the surplus, but it's basically, we've, we've filled the gap exactly. Because of the growth rates, by the time you get to FY25, the next year, you're looking at a gap of just short of 1.5 million, and then that continues to grow to about 2.5 million, 3.6 million, 5 million, et cetera, by the time you get to FY28. What Tom and I have talked about is, what is, what is sort of a reasonable, potentially fillable gap through the normal budget process? And for, for FY25, we think that 1.5 million is reasonable based on the fact that we're able to close that amount this year. So, at one point, our deficit this year got up to 7.5 million when we added all the level services requests from the school municipal, municipal departments in the fall, but that has come back down to about 6 million now because of local receipts, because of the health insurance, even though state aid and certain things went up, other revenues came in and other expenses came down, so we're hoping that one year out, that's a reasonable assumption. So, what that means is, in FY25, we wouldn't need any, any one-time money, any funds from the tax mitigation stabilization fund or override to potentially close that gap. It would kind of be through the normal budget process. What we're thinking for the years beyond that is that gap is potentially $2 million. Some of our assumptions compound upon each other as you go out fiscal years, so for example, we budget health insurance at growing at 10% a year, and typically, at the end of the budget season, that comes in as something less. So, by the time you get to '26, '27, '28, that 10% a year is, is adding on to itself, and hopefully, there'll be some room that appears through things like that, and again, through other things like local receipts. So, if I kind of just do some math here at the bottom and say that a $2 million gap would be fillable, how can I click this? What I'm, what I'm kind of showing here then is what would need to be filled, is sort of the unfillable gap through the normal budget process, what we would need funds from the tax mitigation stabilization fund or another source to get through. So, in FY26, we need, you know, given these, we, we project that we need about $448,000. In FY27, 1.7-ish million, and by the time you get to FY28, it's about 3 million. So, we are saying, if I total the amounts in '26 and '27, that's a total of about $2.1 million. We're proposing to cede the tax mitigation stabilization fund this year with $1 million. So, you'd need a balance of about $1.1 million in those two fiscal years to close these gaps and, and live to the growth rates that we've recommended. We think that is doable based on the unassigned fund balance that we have now and based on some potential use of excess overlay in the out years. What we, so that would get us to FY28, as Tom mentioned. So, if you think of FY24 as year zero, like the year we do the override, FY25 would be year one, '26 would be two, '27 would be three, and FY28 would be year four, the year that we might need to pursue another operating override. We, what we don't feel comfortable saying, if I've totaled the, the amounts for FY26, '27, and '28, is that, looking at this right now, we can't say with confidence that we could make it five years, so we don't want to create that expectation. We will, of course, try to get there, and, and there are some things that may come into play in the next few years, such as new growth of other revenue streams that may come on board. As Tom mentioned, we'll be investigating some of those, but we can say with confidence that we, that we believe it's reasonable to live to, for four years without another operational override. We also talk about potentially in the next 10-year period needing these two before hopefully some real new growth potentially in South Hingham comes on board. So, that's sort of, that's kind of the basis of our plan, and that's what's behind the FY24 to '28 financial management plan that Tom just outlined.
So, that's what we have for your budget discussion for tonight, and that's the background. We're available for questions.
Thank you. A lot of work went into this, this week, and thank, thank you, Tom, Michelle, and Art for all your preparation.
A lot of people in the audience, too.
A lot of people in the audience, yes. So, lot, lot here, so. So, I'll start off with a couple of questions, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, and we'll take some public comment. So, just, just going back, Tom, to your presentation on your additional asks, you mentioned four new firefighters and how that's going to offset overtime costs, which I'm happy to hear that. One of the questions I was thinking when you put, put those numbers up was, how long did it take to get new firefighters on board in terms of hiring process, the academy, you know, on the department?
It's a great point. Thank you for asking it. There is, between the hiring process and the academy, it's close to a year before a firefighter is hired, before concept funding, in essence, and firefighter in the truck helping us offset overtime. So, the reality is, is that we would likely be realizing the benefit of those four new firefighters in FY25, not '24, so we would continue to have to use, hopefully, in a, in a less way. We, we have, we have some, some long-term on, on-job injuries that are coming back soon, so we're hoping for a little bit less pain in '24 than we saw in '23, but we're, we're going to have to continue to use fund balance and the reserve fund transfer to offset the fire overtime problem in FY24.
And the, and the overtime costs are, were they last year, 1.7?
1.7, 1.7 million, yep.
Okay, all right. And Michelle, the, the tax exemption, tax relief programs you mentioned, am I right that we're at the maximum amount allowed by state law for a lot of these programs? Like, we're capped. We can't go any higher?
I think with the, with the article that we're putting forward this year to double the exemptions, that we will be, yes.
Okay, and the, the tax calculator, I know we've gotten some emails from some residents about, hey, how, how, how would this potential override impact, you know, my individual taxes? You said that that's going to be available next week?
The calculator will be, yep, yep. And you saw Michelle's assessment earlier on, on the 25th, 50th, and 75th percentiles. That'll be on the website tomorrow, but the, but the calculator, we're going to hold off until we know what the number's going to be.
Okay.
We don't want people feeling like they were misled by putting a calculator up prior to the, having a final number.
Okay, thank you. Let me turn to Liz, see if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think it was helpful for everybody to, to kind of see this again and, and go through it, and certainly the, the financial management plan in detail. The financial management plan obviously is a precedent set in FY21 and how to deal with the, and get through the pandemic. It's certainly a best practice that we saw as part of the Sustainable Budget Task Force process that other communities are using, and our group felt strongly that that was an important piece to make a commitment to the public and to each other as leaders of, of how we are going to manage going forward. So, thank you for all the work that's gone into that. We've talked about the stabilization fund, which also is a best practice that many other communities are using, so I'm, I'm glad that we're pursuing that as well and using that, I think strategically, to get us to FY28. Certainly, I think, what I think is important, and I'm hearing from the public too, is, you know, that what do we need now for level services? What do we need for the additional requests that align with our master plan, the school strategic plan, and then what is the growth rate? What is the commitment? How often do we expect override? So, those are kind of the three pieces in my mind that I think people need to understand, you know, what, what we're talking about and, and really think about the services that we value and that we want to continue, acknowledging that these things may evolve and we may have to make changes and adapt as we move forward in the next several years. And I know, Tom, you mentioned, you know, there may have to be reductions or differences in services, and I did want to just reiterate that before coming up with the level services budget, that process was, was gone through as well. We looked for efficiencies, possible redundancies, unfilled positions that we didn't see critical as fulfilling level services. So, I've, I've gotten some questions about that from the public, so I do want to make sure that that is, is clear, that that process was gone through as part of this budget season, and then, of course, as part of the Sustainable Budget Task Force, we started with looking at expenditures. We did, we didn't start with revenue, so we evaluated the four main budgets, education, DPW, police, fire, and that, you know, that's where we thought we could find, if there was a redundancy or something, you know, some sort of waste, like, that would be the place to find it in those big budgets. That would be, have the most impact, and we found that the operations are very lean, which is no surprise probably to anybody in this room, but just to reiterate, we did go through that process. It was a very thoughtful process, and we did evaluate those, those operations and those budgets. As far as the additional requests, you know, several of these things I know have, have been requested for many years. The town engineer I do see as a priority. J.R. Frye's amazing, but he's doing the work of probably three people right now, and I think it's, you know, it's critical for that position as we look forward, too, in, in looking at economic development, more projects coming online, climate resiliency, grant opportunities, that, that engineering position I see as critical to, to all of those. The senior center program coordinator, we've also talked about that for many years, and I know our, our seniors need more services. We're hearing that loud and clear. We had a gentleman at the last office hours talking about the need for a senior center and senior services and programming, and I don't think there's any... And I don't think there's any reason to wait for that, to fulfill those programming needs while we wait for a building. I think there's a lot that can be done in this interim period before the building is done. So I certainly see that as a priority. The budgeting software, I think, will make everyone's life easier. And I think this board is committed to looking for those sorts of efficiencies and how to get us into the 24th century and so that we're really operating at the most efficient and effective manner. And I do think that that software will help. The fire, I know we talked about, certainly, we're concerned with the physical and mental health of the firefighters, the morale. It's obviously a very difficult job. But all of that aside, we did the modeling and, again, worked with the chief and John Asher to really understand the dollars and cents of that decision and what that meant. And I think, I feel confident that we will see an actual savings in terms of overtime, which you don't see in the operational budget, so the operating budget. So it can be a little confusing. But knowing that we're taking, you know, almost $2 million out of fund balance to fill that gap is, I think, a little alarming. And those are the sort of structural deficits in this budget that we wanted to correct during this process and including the capital. I think that $500,000 is kind of the minimum to get us in compliance with our own financial policy. So I appreciate the additional requests that you've put forward, Tom. I think they make sense, again, for where this town wants to go, what our master plan vision is. So I feel comfortable with those. As far as the financial management plan, it's quite exhaustive in terms of the definitions, which I appreciate. I think it's really clear. I'm happy to see the 3.5%. That is, those were the projections that the Sustainable Budget Task Force came up with. That was the modeling we did. We didn't know if that would end up being the recommended number. But I think it makes a lot of sense in terms of, once we have the override, that those are reasonable numbers for us to manage to. And I think it makes sense for those numbers to be town-wide and apply to municipal and school budgets. Sorry, I guess not too many questions, but a lot of comments. I guess that's it for me for now.
Joe?
Those were great comments, Liz. And I think you really summarized the work that each individual member of this board and of other committees have gone through in terms of the careful analysis and the work that our staff has done. I want to start, actually, with Tom, who told, who made the comment that he was recently informed about the saying necessity is the mother of invention. I assume you know that traces back to Plato from the Socratic discussion. So if you add discussions with Plato, I was going to be really, really impressed.
John Asher is our Plato.
Yeah, close enough.
He has the Platonic and Socratic discussions. In terms of the override that's being proposed, at least for me, it's clear that we are not, I am not advocating an override in a vacuum. That the override is part of, and for me, it's necessarily going to be tied to, this memorandum of understanding, is that we go forward with an override with a commitment to the residents that we're going to be managing the town in a certain way. And it's not just the select board, but all the boards are. And I think with that commitment, I'm hopeful that the residents have the confidence that we've put together a plan that makes sense and that the 3.5% that we are all committing to will be honored. Question for you, Tom. To what extent have the new foster school and the new public safety building, have those been factored into the budgets that are being proposed? In other words, the budgets that are being presented, I'm assuming they assume that in the appropriate time, public safety building is in effect, new foster school is there. And are those costs part of what we're projecting?
Yes, so I can't speak for Dr. Adams and her budgeting process, so I can't speak to the foster school. But for the public safety facility, that will go online in FY '25. And the only additional person or body that would be needed over there would be, that would be a budget change, is the custodial person, and that would be for the FY '25 budget. As far as anticipated energy costs, there, the architect did do some analysis on that. I don't recall off the top of my head, Joe, if they said it was a wash or an additional or not. But again, that would come as an expense in the FY '25 budget.
Anyone from the school department want to comment on making sure that the upcoming foster school, the new building, that those costs are factored into the budget that's being proposed for the schools? The dynamic duo. I won't say who's Batman and who's Robin.
Dr. Adams, you should just name and position for the record.
Margaret Adams, Superintendent.
Ayesha Pong, Director of Business and Support Services.
If we understand your question, is it in regards to facilities?
Correct, and personnel.
And personnel. As far as facilities, you have an amazing school building committee who is working very diligently to make sure that they make the best decisions that allow for really good utilities, the best of the best, to make sure that our costs are in line. And any kinds of equipment, that the best of the best, to make sure that those facilities costs, utilities costs are within what we currently have. So I think that we know that the building will be bigger. There may be some custodial costs as we move forward. That will do, through the MOU, our best within that 3.5. But again, there is that line there that says we are going to be really seeking efficiencies, redundancies, as has been said on the municipal side, as well as there may be a point where there may need to be personnel and/or service reductions as we move forward in the next four years. One of the things the foster will allow us to do is expand pre-K programming, which we know is really important to this community. It's really clear with the number of private preschool programs in the area. We currently charge a fee for those, which may allow us to offset some of those costs. We'll be, as part of the MOU, and we'll be looking to, and I think Tom said it, increase fees. So we'll be as creative as we can to make sure that we're able to staff the building. And I think extending the pre-K program and really building an early childhood program there has great potential to sort of help support some of those goals.
All right, I mean, the only thing I'll add to what Margaret has said already is that in some of our projections of energy usage, we are actually having savings just because of the efficiencies that we're seeing in that area. In terms of the kindergarten, pre-kindergarten program, we have a pilot that we're running this year for Spanish immersion program. And one of the things that we're really excited about is that we had a lottery. And we ended up having, we ended up having with almost a full classroom that we couldn't fill because of space limitations. So that was very exciting for us in terms of the potential for foster. So just to give you a little bit of a peek of what we're anticipating as well.
That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So there are two aspects of what's being proposed in our budget above level services that I think are very important. One is the budgeting software. And Tom, in your comments, you talked about how that will enhance communications.
Yes.
And I think that's right. But I think most importantly is it provides for a better budgeting process. And as much as we have been relying on and taking advantage of Mr. Asher, there are more, the software has evolved so that I think we'll be able to have more sophisticated budgeting. And I think the town, in the short term and the long term, will benefit. The other request, and that really is not above level services, but to avoid any cuts, which would have to happen if we do not have an override, is funding for economic development. You touched on that in your presentation. One of the core methods that this town has employed in the past, and I believe will intend in the future, will follow in the future, is economic development. And unfortunately, if we do not have the override, the staffing for that economic development work will be adversely affected. And that would be a long-term disaster for the town, from my perspective. So I think it's critical that we have an override, avoid that loss in capacity to move forward with growth, because growth, I think, is one of the important keys to avoid future overrides. So I'm really glad that you are advocating for that. Let me just see any other questions that popped up. One thing that really jumped out at me in one of the slides, you don't have to pull it up again, when we were looking at the median tax impact, we saw that the base fiscal year 24 property tax bill, the median, was a little over 9,000. When you looked at the average number for the prior year, it's 11,000, which highlights the difference between the mean and the median and shows how, you know, the very upper end is skewing that analysis. And it's really the median analysis that's important. So I really appreciate that you've focused on that. And with respect to the out-of-district expenditures, where everything was capped at 3.5%, but those expenditures, the projection was 2%. And my understanding is that's based upon basically historical average numbers, which has, have been 2% except for fiscal year '24, which is an outlier.
They vary greatly, but the anticipated annual growth would be 2%.
Yeah, but that's based on the historical averages.
Yes.
Yep. I think, I know Liz commented on additional funding for the seniors, for the senior center. The senior population is a significant group in our town. And I feel like we have been pushing them to the back of the line as we do other things. So I think it's important that they not be pushed to the back of the line and that we've included in the proposal what they've asked for here. And that it would be our intention that this memorandum of understanding does not preclude us from moving forward with evaluating a future senior center.
That's exactly right.
Yep.
I do make it a goal never to push seniors, by the way.
But again, I really thank you for all the effort. I got no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're going to turn now to public comment and just want to put some, I anticipate some public comment on this agenda item. So I want to just go over some parameters on public comment. First of all, these are time, place, manner restrictions. First of all, for those who want to speak, and I ask you just, those in the room, come up to the podium. Just state your name and address to identify yourselves. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. And I'm going to ask that comments be related to the agenda item that is currently being discussed by the board right now. And I'll go to the audience in the room first, and then I'll go to Zoom. And again, if anybody's on Zoom who wishes to speak, just raise your hand virtually or physically, and I will, I'll call on you. So with that, let's take some public comment. Diana Napoli, come on up.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Diana Napoli, 16 Gardner Street. Thank you for allowing me to have some comments tonight. I am the vice chair of the Hingham Commission on Disabilities, but I'm speaking here tonight as a private citizen. During COVID, we heard the expression, "We are all in the same boat frequently." It's tempting to look at information like the average house price at $900,000 and assume everyone is doing all right or are actually wealthy in Hingham. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of many residents in Hingham who are not, who are on the lower economic margins or have disabilities. Sadly, many times, they are in the same population. Before coming here tonight, I reached out to Vinnie Hart at Wellspring and Sue Kiernan at the Hingham Food Pantry. I asked how many residents in Hingham are they currently servicing? Wellspring is working with 50 families in Hingham, providing assistance with things as housing, utilities, and transportation. The Hingham Food Pantry is now servicing 200 people in Hingham, up from 155, 300, three years ago. Many of these people are our neighbors, seniors, veterans, who, without this kind of good work, would be hungry. Every Hingham resident is experiencing higher prices at the supermarket, the gas pump, the doctors. Even the dollar store is now a $1.25 store. So inflation is hitting us all, and I do know that applies to your spending as well. When the town suggests people can offset their tax bill with tax relief exception programs, keep in mind, this is only for homeowners. That does very little for people paying rent, whose rent will go up when the tax rate goes up and landlords have to pay that. Additionally, many people are just making a little too much money to afford any kind of assistance, whether it be local or state or federal. And they are struggling to pay bills. How does the boat look to these people? When Hingham residents are having hard times financially, we cut back on spending. Maybe people get part-time jobs or side hustles. When a company has multiple quarters in the red, they are forced to tighten margins. This means cutting expenses, trimming personnel, cutting back, and seeing what rates can be changed and how it's palpable to their marketplace. Many are aware that Hingham has conducted an ADA survey. I have it right here. This survey addresses many needs that need to be looked at to be in compliance with the ADA. And I appreciate Art and others who participated. This was no small task. Sadly, in the $500,000 in the overlay capital budget that was described, to my knowledge, not one penny has been put in to address these needs. A very modest amount of the school's $65 million budget has been set aside to address some ADA issues. And I thank the school board and Dr. Adams for working on that. That will go to assist children to have access to playgrounds. So thank you. So how is our boat looking now? Have we taxed moderate families out of Hingham? We have asked for three capital over projects in the last year. They were all successfully passed. And now we are proposing a $6 to $8 million permanent tax increase. Can we afford that? And who might be pushed out of the boat? Can those with disabilities even get on the boat? Frankly, not really if we haven't built an accessible ramp. And we've been way too far slow funding special education programs that will allow more children to stay in district. I implore you and authority and my fellow Hingham residents to be reminded that this budget is a value statement. A healthy, sustainable, and truly equitable town budget would attempt to equally support all residents and everyone in Hingham. I leave you with the words of Mahatma Gandhi. "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." Thank you.
Diana, thank you very much. Mary Power.
Hi, Mary Power, One King Philip. I had a couple of quick questions about some of the great information. And thanks to everybody for putting it together. In the planning document, I guess just one of the things that I am imagining it's there, but I just want to clarify, is somewhere in there that unassigned fund balance would not drop below 20%. In other words, that, you know, you mentioned that you have goals for the, you know, different goals. One of them is obviously the credit rating, which is really driven by the fund balance. And the reason I'm just bringing that up is it feels like there is the potential in the next four years for a lot of pulls on unassigned fund balance, whether that's reserve fund transfers, continued structural deficits that this override doesn't address, as well as the tax mitigation fund. And if, like I heard the advisory committee saying a couple of weeks ago, you know, it's a given that that unassigned fund balance that's part of the financial policy stays at 16 to 20, it just might be a good idea to echo that in this document because you've got all these great definitions and things in there. You know, maybe one more thing to memorialize. to memorialize. I just, I had two other questions about the financials. Is the pool in those numbers?
No, it's not.
Okay, okay. And is, you know, in terms of interest rates for the capital projects, and I know we're kind of primarily focusing on the budget, but is there any sense that, you know, it's hard to predict them, but is, do we feel okay about the interest rate assumptions that are in there?
I think right now, they're fairly conservative, starting around 3 and 3.5% and going up to 5%.
Yeah.
But that's something that we'll continue to look at with capital markets over time. The numbers for FY '24 in terms of debt service are set, because we did borrow
Okay.
for them so far, but every year, we'll be revising those as well.
Thank you.
For the out-years.
And just two quick comments. You know, I appreciate the tax impact information, and I appreciate you listening to that, because I think, I just think it's really important that people know what they're signing up for, and everybody gets to make their own decision. I would encourage the board, if it's putting that information up, to put it up for at least FY '24, '25, and '26, because the big impact of those capital projects is '25 and '26. So, you know, 11% in this first year is one piece of information, but I think being really upfront with people and saying, "In '25 and '26, there's going to be an extra, you know, 5% or whatever it is for these capital projects," is, you know, is important. And then the last thing I'd just maybe leave the board with is, you know, the town is doing a great job with a lot of the tax relief programs, and I know we've all struggled with the fact that it's hard, it's hard to find programs, not many of our residents qualify for things we have. It's my understanding with the senior means-tested circuit breaker, if I'm saying that right, that one of the big limiting factors in Hingham is that the average assessed value of a home is above the threshold for qualifying for that exemption. And I guess my question is, you know, as we look ahead, is there anything that we can do to restructure that program, to tie it to a different number that could potentially open this program up for more of our fellow citizens to qualify for? So, you know, after you get some sleep when this is all done, maybe something to put on what I know is already a long list, but anyway, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room have any public comment? All right, see, now I'm going to turn to Zoom to see if anybody on Zoom has any questions or comments on this agenda item. Again, and if you do, just kind of raise your hand virtually or physically wave at me.
Is there more than one screen?
They would pop to the top.
No.
I'm not seeing anyone.
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's participation tonight. So let me turn to my colleagues to deliberate. I know we've got a lot of information this evening. Not sure if people want to take some time to think about it or vote. Joe, where are you at?
Well, I think there's two, conceptually, two votes for me. One is the vote on the budget numbers, and with respect to that side, there is the vote on a balanced budget, assuming no override. And I think those numbers are clear.
Yeah.
And we have a statutory obligation to have a balanced budget. I want to make sure, because I know I've gotten emails, I expected many people have on this board and elsewhere have gotten emails saying, you know, "Don't vote for a budget cut." Our vote for a balanced budget is something required by law. It's not advocating the cut. It's simply acknowledging that by statute, we have to have a budget that balances. So hopefully, no one will misinterpret our vote as saying, "Oh, let's just cut the budget." And I think with respect to the override numbers, I've gone through the numbers, I'm satisfied that we can, I'm comfortable proceeding with them. With respect to the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, I think we've heard some good comments that may require us to edit the language there before we finalize it. And so I think that the question is, since those, since the budget is really tied to the MOU, do we need to tie the votes? I'm not sure we do. I think we can vote on the budget, and then in a subsequent meeting, vote on the MOU. So I'm comfortable proceeding with a vote on the budget items, namely, the balanced budget, plus, as an alternative, and as, I think, where I'm coming out in favor of the override budget, but not voting on the MOU until we finalize that language, is where I'm coming out.
Liz, what do you think?
I think that makes sense. I would like to go through the MOU again. I think Mary brought up a great point about the unassigned fund balance, so I would like some more time with that.
I think the numbers we have are included within a balanced budget and some of the override numbers.
Yeah.
So the proposed...
I'm just looking at them real quick. I want to make sure the numbers are correct.
The proposed votes that are in front of you, if that's what you wanted to use?
Yeah.
Where the balanced budget is the first number, and then the level services additional budget is the second number.
And they pull off this large spreadsheet that is in the packets, that kind of outlines by department which amount would be the balanced budget, what we would add back in terms of level services, what we would add in terms of additional requests, and then sort of what the resulting recommended budget might be.
Yep. So just in terms of the structure of the vote, it looks like it's, we're voting to recommend, you know, a balanced budget amount of X dollars, and a recommended budget of Y for each category.
That's correct, yeah.
And the way I think of it is that we're voting for a balanced budget for all these categories, and then a, you know, an override, because we're not presenting each category each time. It's going to be...
That's right.
We've got the statutory balanced budget, and then we have the override budget. And those two are, as I'm looking at this, sort of commingled in each vote.
Yeah, easily separated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I suspect this has been reviewed by John, so, by John Coughlin, so I don't want to...
No, we crafted it off of...
It lays it out. I mean, it's, there's a recommendation for the balanced budget amount and a recommended additional budget amount.
Right.
Per each line item. So I think it's relatively, relatively easy to follow along and do it.
But you want to do it as two separate votes.
Right. In other words, because...
No, I think we could do it as each line item. I think we can go item by item. Like, for example, we can do the general government.
Right.
For example, the balanced budget amount and the recommended budget amount.
Right, which is how it's presented here.
Yeah. I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, I mean, I think our obligation is to vote on a balanced budget, which is sort of all of the balanced budget items, and so we've got that. And then, we're proposing the override budget. And I'm just seeing this commingled, and not as clearly distinct. You're correct. I think, bottom line, it has the same legal impact, but in terms of the message to the community, I'm not sure it comes through this, but I'll defer to how, what are the two of you?
It makes sense to me. I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be, the first number is going to be the balanced budget number, and the second number is, I mean, if the second number is recommended, the second one is going to be the higher number, which would coincide with the, an override number. So, and if, you know, if it's been reviewed and approved by town council, I think that's, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I...
So just for the record, we put these documents together, and the vote list is off of the budget sheets that we manage. John doesn't look at those?
Coughlin did not review.
All right, so then...
But he wouldn't normally. I mean, it's not...
We grouped it by functional area, just so you didn't have to read, like, 300 lines, but you're also, you're welcome to do it by department or by the total number at the bottom.
So let me...
Yeah, we have to go, we have to go line item by line item.
So where is the, where in the vote is the bottom line? Is there...
No, we did it.
It would all tally to that.
It's the, I think it's the last...
The tally's to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
So if you wanted to do it Joe's way, you could do, instead of 10 votes, 20 votes.
No, I don't want to do, I don't want to do 20 votes. So where is the...
It's the total balance, total recommended.
Okay, so I think going through this way, and then finding, having a final vote saying, our final vote, you know, tallies to a balanced budget of, you know, that's what we're voting for, and then...
Okay. So it's the 139 versus 147?
Yeah. Again, my concern is by having each, having the vote as it's currently proposed, it commingles each one. It's not clear what we're advocating.
Yeah.
And I think we are advocating for the override budget, but we are, out of necessity, voting for the balanced budget.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, but then, I guess, if we're going to do it your way, we're going to have to take 20 votes.
Um...
We'll have to just do each one. Or we wait a week and get Coughlin to approve the vote list as it's been presented.
Yeah, John probably won't change the vote process, so you guys can certainly advise us, and we have to put whatever process you want to get.
I mean, the way you're proposing, Joe, is the way the town moderator will do it.
Right.
At town meeting. I'm not sure, I'm not certain we have to follow that lead, but if you're concerned, do it right, or wait a week and get John Coughlin to approve it, or we just do the 20 votes now.
No, or...
If that's what you want to do.
So I think you raise a good point with respect to the town moderator. So as long as what we're doing allows the town moderator to, in fact, do it the way we both anticipate, which is, here's the balanced budget, then I'm comfortable doing it this way.
Yeah, the town moderator will go through line item by line item, the balanced budget, and then the override amount.
Yep.
So the town moderator will take the potential 20 votes.
Yep, right.
But he has to do that. That's what it requires, I'm not sure it requires us, but we can wait a week and make sure that town council's okay with it. I'm okay with that.
We can also read off each department, if you guys like, and then you take one vote for the balance at the end, and one vote for the recommended as presented, like, we can read into the...
The way Michael would, we could sit here and just read it right now, and then you can vote it as stated.
We'd have to vote each department.
It'd be two votes. You could vote the balanced budget at the end.
No, we can't, because I've got to recuse on two of them.
Right, right, right. We can't, he can't, he can't do that.
Yeah. I've got to recuse on public safety and recreation, because I have family members...
We could pull those two out and do them separate. It'd be four votes.
We could, yeah.
And then I think you just vote as presented, you know, those amounts.
I mean...
Liz, you're being siloed on this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the way the vote list is presented, I'm okay with the 20 votes.
Do you have a preference?
If, that's what it is. If this has been approved by John Coughlin?
It has not.
It has not.
Correct.
Okay, then we should wait, probably, if we're not sure.
I'm not, I'm not sure John is going to opine. I think however we do it, it's legal.
Okay.
This is not a legal issue. This is clearly communicating to the residents what we are advocating for. And I think we are not advocating for the balanced budget, which represents material cuts in services.
Correct.
I think we are advocating for an override budget. And that's my only, that's my only concern.
If I made Michelle's suggestion of us just reading these off, we could read them off, it'll take two minutes apiece. We'll read, go through them, and then you guys can vote that, we'll exclude...
But we're not doing it that way, because we're going to vote each one.
We have to vote each one.
Right, we're not going to, we're not going to read it off that way.
Yeah, we have to vote each one, that's the only problem.
I'm comfortable with this language, and then I think we can say, "The balanced budget is $139 million. The override budget is $147 million, and that is what the select board is recommending." Right?
So just...
I mean, I'm fine with it.
Right. So just, just without me making the motion, here's how it would sound. "I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 government, general government balanced budget of $5,477,179, and a recommended budget of $6,27,145." So what am I really recommending?
Can we add in override? Can we say recommended override budget?
No, it's just the recommended budget.
Recommended budget.
So, so that's a single vote for two items, and I think it doesn't communicate that we really want the override budget.
Okay, then listen, we're going to break it up. We're going to do 20 votes.
Yeah.
20 votes, that's okay. I mean, if you're, I don't want to do anything you're not comfortable with, so do 20 votes.
Our chair is so gentle.
20 votes. All right, so let's just do the balanced budget number first, and then we'll go back and do the others.
Okay.
All right, so...
Want me to start?
Well, I'm not going to have Joe start. We thought he started. So Liz, you're up.
I make a motion to recommend an FY '24 general government balanced budget of $5,477,139.
Second.
Call of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, motion carries. I take a second. You know, Liz, you take this one.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend an FY '24 general government recommended budget of $6...
I'm sorry, Liz, if I can interrupt.
No, no, we're going to go through...
Going to go through...
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. Okay. Sorry, everybody.
I'll have me do the next one.
Okay. I make a motion to recommend an FY '24 public safety balanced budget of $16,924,899.
Second.
Call the vote, Liz.
Oh, you can't. Oh, sorry. Okay, Joe?
Aye.
Liz? Aye.
And I'm going to, for the record, I'm abstaining.
Make a motion to rec...
I'll take, I'll take a third, I'll take a third motion. I'm back now.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 education balanced budget of $61,922,21.
Call of the favor, Joe?
I got a second there.
Oh, second.
Second.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Joe, fourth motion?
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 public works balanced budget of $9,745,564.
Second.
Call of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 human services balanced budget of $854,385.
Second.
Call of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. All right, Joe, I'm going to have you take the next one.
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 cultural, culture and recreation balanced budget of
Second.
Can you call it, Joe?
All those in favor?
Liz? Aye.
Joe? Aye.
And I'm abstaining for the record. I take, next motion?
I make a motion to recommend an FY '24 enterprise fund balanced budget of $16,359,253.
Second.
Call of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. I take a next motion.
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 debt service balanced budget of $8,783,729.
Second.
Call of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. I take another motion?
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 employee benefits balanced budget of $16,584,348.
Second.
Call of the favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries, and I would take another motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 unclassified balanced budget of $1,225,910.
Second.
Call of the favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
So that's...
All right, so that would take us to the total fiscal 2024 balanced budget amount. So I would make a motion.
So before you do that, if you make that motion, you're including in there items that you've recused yourself on.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So it's going to be-
So I'm not even sure we need to make that as a motion, just sort of noting for the record that what we've just told.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
So for the record, so the balanced budget amount for fiscal year 2024 that's been recommended by the board is 139,343,000. The 139,343,321 as the total amount.
Yes.
All right. So let's go back to the, the second, second sets of votes. And we will start with general governments. So Joe, why don't you lead us off on this one?
So we are now doing our recommended budget. I make a motion to recommend a fiscal year 24 general government recommended budget of 6,027,145.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. All right, Joe, you take this one?
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 public safety recommended budget of 17,817,682.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye.
And for the record, I'm going to abstain. All right, I take a next motion?
Liz?
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 education recommended budget of 65,703,985.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Take a next motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 public works recommended budget of 10,377,611.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Take another motion?
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 human services recommended budget of 1,339,499.
Second.
Joe? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. I'm going to abstain on this one.
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 culture and recreation recommended budget of 2,765,203.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe? Aye.
And I'm going to abstain for the record.
Motion carries.
I take another motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 enterprise fund recommended budget of 16,454,253.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Take another motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend an FY '24 debt service recommended budget of 8,783,729.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. I take another motion?
I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 employee benefits recommended budget of 16,584,348.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries.
And finally, I move to recommend a fiscal year 24 unclassified recommended budget of
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. And so for the record, the, that recommended budget amount is 147,079,365.
Bill, thank you for indulging me.
No problem. Anytime, anytime. All right. And the matter of the MOU will be tabled until next week. Okay. All right, we're going to go back now to, oh, by the way, the school committee, you want to stay for the personnel report, Michelle?
Desperately.
Yep. Sorry, I wouldn't have any of you. Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is 2023 annual town meeting warrant article discussion, which is Article D, report of the Personnel Board. Dave, why don't you come on up and join us at the table?
We don't either. It's fine.
Couple people on TV, so. Good evening.
Dave, good evening. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. It's nice to, I almost forgot how to get to this building. It's been so long since we've seen you folks.
If you don't mind, start out with your name and address, Dave, and-
David Pace, 15 Buck Mill Lane here, representing the Personnel Board to present Article D and the Personnel Board report to the Board, the Select Board. First, just like to do a quick introduction of the Board who couldn't be here tonight and sit through all this. But anyway, so we have Jack Manning, Courtney Orwig, Karen Johnson, and new member Bob Curley. And I also want to thank Russ Khan, who was a member for 10-plus years. He recently stepped off the Board and did a tremendous job and spent a lot of time supporting the town and a lot, a lot of good things for the town. So it was, it was a good year. It's a busy year. We kind of play our dual role between collective bargaining and managing the Personnel Bylaw. I think as, as you're very aware, recently, we, you recently approved the collective bargaining agreement with DPW employees, which is great. It took a while to get through, but I think it was done. I think it's a good result. And that means that all open collective bargaining agreements are now closed, which is great. And I want to thank Jack and Karen in particular for marshaling that through. It was a long process and appreciate your patience and support through that all as well. We have one contract coming up in this upcoming fiscal year, which is a DPW supervisor. So that'll start probably sometime in June, July or so. We probably should look to get together after you get through this town meeting to kind of talk about that contract and how we move forward. We are recommending, again, this year for all non-union employees, a 3% general wage increase, which would be consistent with what we agreed to with the unions in last year. We asked that there be appropriate approximately $302,000 to pay for that wage increase, plus it would also cover the unsettled labor contract if, when it gets settled and any kind of unanticipated wage increases for reclassifications and new hires, et cetera. Sue Nickerson calculated that, so you can rely on her, not me, which is a much more comforting thing. And over the course of the year, we did reclassify three positions. We also needed to adjust a number of seasonal and part-time positions to account for the changes in Massachusetts' minimum wage law, the increase to $15, which then kind of rippled through a lot of our employee positions. And we created a new position for the Community Response Clinician, which is now part of the Police Department, which is a great addition. And as well, to manage a number of promotions, transfers and revised job descriptions as usual. So it's a pretty busy year this year. And lastly, we are, thanks to Bob Curley, new member who comes on and reads the Personnel Bylaw more diligently than those of us who've been on for 15 years. So, you know, we're, we're clarifying a couple terms in the Personnel Bylaw to make it consistent with, with actual practice, to show that our term runs through the fiscal year and not through the annual town meeting. So we're proposing an amendment to accomplish that. So that's it.
Great. So Dave, obviously, busy two years for the, for the Board.
Yeah.
Lot of great work settling these, these CBAs. And I want to echo what you said about the great job that Jack and Karen did with the DPW contract. It was a great result. Took us a long time to get there, but Jack and Karen were, were great steward for the town in getting us, getting us that, that CBA done. And I know, I want to know for the record, it was unanimous vote by the DPW as well.
Great.
It was great. So appreciate your leadership.
Yep, thank you.
The 3% increase, that's been budgeted for, correct?
Yes, it is.
All right. So it's part of the numbers we just saw?
Yes.
Liz, any questions?
No questions. I understand that, well, I guess I do have a question. I understand the 3% and all of the reclassification, the wage study that we have done, that everything has been incorporated already, right? There's nothing outstanding from that perspective.
In terms of the wage classification study, no, yes. As far as I know, yes, everything's been, been, all the job, the salaries have all been adjusted. We're probably catching up, changing some of the job descriptions that were recommended there. I mean, it takes time to go through all that.
Sure, sure.
But yes, the financial piece of it, yes, it's all caught up.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Joe?
Yeah, so I just, the numbers pop out in me. So you've got a 3% and we just voted for 3.5%. So I just want to make sure that there's no miscommunication here. We are not, this Board is not advocating 3.5% increases as you proceed, as, as the committee proceeds.
In wages.
Yeah, correct. That, you know, in fact, you know, our position continues to be, we're looking at the, at our comparable towns and we are looking, we're meeting, and it may be in some cases, it's, it's going to be more than 3%. It's going to, it may, it may be less. And each, each of these situations is viewed based on its individual merit. We have not advocated, hey, abandon that, we're to just go with 3. And that is not where we're at.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I understand that. And I think, you know, we continue to operate too based on our 20-town comparison studies and looking at how we should fall in each position as it is. So maybe, as you said, maybe less, maybe more.
Right.
Fending out justified.
So, so no, no negotiation should start with the other side saying, oh, you agreed to at least a 3.5%. Now we're going to try to, that's not what, what this Board has been advocating.
I understand.
Yeah. But in terms of your efforts and quite frankly, the committee's efforts as a whole, it's just been remarkable and we greatly appreciate it.
It's a good group of people and I thank you. And again, thank you for your support through the whole process and town administration as well. It's been, can't do it without it.
My last, last set of question, Dave, I know the school committee is going to have a lot of CBAs coming up this year. What about on our side? When's the next one? It's going to be, will we, will we police fire?
Yeah, after we have the DPW, you got DPW supervisors or this coming fiscal year and then-
That's right, DPW supervisors.
Next filing fiscal year, it's a busy year. I think we have five. We have police, fire, library. And believe it or not, the DPW employees come back again.
Oh, they do come back again?
Yeah, it's, it's, it took a long time. And so it's, it was almost two years retro, you know. And the way we had a structure, it was a one-year and a three-year deal. So it covered a four-year period because it was a catch-up year. And then a three-year, but that means I believe they all expire end of next fiscal year, 2024, right?
Is it 24 or 25 anyway? Yeah.
Yeah, coming up soon.
I think it's 25.
I think it's 25.
Am I counting wrong?
But they're coming up soon. Either way, it's around the corner.
One second, let me see.
Let's hope it's 25.
Well, DPW, right, it's 2025.
Right.
DPW is 2025, yeah.
Okay.
So the others may be 2024, which I think is correct. So it's four, be police, fire, two police, fire and library. It would come beginning July 1, 2024, right?
That's right. Karen and Jack are going to stay on the DPW supervisors? Or do you have a-
They will stay on with the supervisor. Yep. Yes, I think it's important, certainly since after they spent all the time with the, with the DPW to kind of just have that historical knowledge that hopefully works through in this one. And then we may mix things up in terms of the committees for the next, next go-around with Rush dropping off. And then, you know, Bob and Karen are relatively new still to the process. So trying to mix it up so we get some, we all have gray hair, but some gray hairs with some of the newer folks. So, but yeah, but they will do this DPW contract, yeah.
Russ was a big loss, but having Karen on and getting Bob on board is, is wonderful for the town. So-
Yeah, no, it's a good group of people.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate your leadership again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody have any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I think we have a motion. I'll make this one. You guys are ready.